Next item is the preliminary of June period finance.
Yes, we have the preliminary, the first preliminary report for June. Our unit of bank revenues are eighty seven point seven million. Our unit of expenditures are nine two point five million. Our ending fund base, fund balance, excuse me, for June thirtieth is nineteen billion eight hundred and four thousand. We are continuing to post the necessary items to record for the year again. So the majority of our expenditures and revenues have already been recorded in these numbers. We still are working towards that closing date of September the thirtieth.
And we'll be bringing June, July, and August all together at the September meeting, which is typical for us. We do have some more revenue that will be coming in. We anticipate being over twenty three dollars in reserve with this part once it's closed down.
Very close to what we anticipated when we brought forward.
I think when Miss Pappel, when I looked at it, it was about a seventeen thousand dollar difference from the anticipated budget running your.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Next item is Mrs. Collins discussing the shopping scholars.
Good evening. So we did have a meeting recently back in July in regards to the shopping scholars fund. You'll see who those committee members are that we met via Zoom on July twelfth. The original purpose of the shopping scholars fund was to assist disadvantaged students and their families that attend the Angel City schools. That assistance back in that two thousand and eight unit was to, it included things like field trips, curriculum books, groceries for parents, the Duke tip, AP exams, Discover test program fees. We currently have a balance of about twenty nine thousand six hundred and ten dollars with that, the last amount being put into that account in two thousand and, that came in in December of two thousand and twenty two. The high school, the last time we accessed this fund was in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year. And you can notice that we only took out anywhere from about fourteen hundred, two thousand dollars and it was for the AP exams there. The high school pays for AP exams, you know, they get state funding as well as they use their consolidated funds to pay for AP exams. So they are not accessing the fund for this. Elementary and middle school really hadn't accessed the fund either. So what we did is we looked at the original intent of the fund and then we talked about what can we use these funds for. And so we said things that are student based funds, I mean student based things such as field trips when kids can't afford to pay for a field trip. Or competitions in elementary, it might be when they are having robotics competitions and they may have to go and stay overnight for competitions out of state or, you know, in the state. And then if there are people that can't afford to pay for that, then, you know, be accessed for that as well as any conferences that students are attending, not the staff, but student conferences. So the same thing with middle school and then the high, middle school also, and this is middle school less specifically. They would like to access the fund to pay for things that they would put in their care closets for families, you know, be it food or clothing, that kind of, that, those kinds of things. The high school, again, they would not really use it for AP exams, but they did talk about, talk about using it for perhaps SBT, ACT, and AP prep materials for individual students. If there are some students who can't afford to buy those individual test prep kind of materials, then, you know, they would, you know, use it for that as well as possibly some college applications. For any of the students that are applying for colleges and they don't have funds to help pay for some of those college applications for field trips, competition, conferences, especially with CTA conferences and things like that, that, you know, students, especially if they're officers and they may not be able to, you know, to pay for like a hotel if they're, you know, going for a conference or something. So those were the things that they would use it for. Now, in order to access this fund, they, these funds, they would have to complete an application or grant request. And then this committee that you saw earlier, we would be the ones that would say yea or nay and then, then send that, turn that information over to Kathy, who would then reach out to the community foundation, community. To access the fund. So we would just make the request and then she would then, you know, then, you know, reach out to them, this is the amount and what it's being used for and then they would write a share for what is, what is needed. Any questions about the shopping scholars fund?
Same with your, it's okay. Yeah. All right, thank you, Ms. Charles.
Dr. Williams has signed a new agreement. He thought he already, because we needed to update the agreement and so that is what's there that the new agreement is.
All right, now under our action items, looking to approve most of the items about two and three. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Smith to approve the smaller ones, small three, small three. We hear a second.
Second.
Taken by Dr. Ramsey. Any question? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Nows, will you give us a report on the additional parking lot?
I probably said one two.
Yeah, yeah, under all I. I was giving a small hour and a second.
Sorry, we'll work it.
I thought I was getting a break tonight.
No offense, no breaks. You can't run through a fence, there's not one there. That's why we didn't finish.
Yeah, we're holding on. Our first request this evening is to purchase two thousand and twenty four, it is a pickup truck trailer combination for fields. We currently haul equipment, tractors, and lawn equipment from one field to another. We do it now with a truck and trailer. This is a combo, so we can do it now with really just the one vehicle. This purchase off a state contract through Gangle Truck Center.
Motion to approve. I have a good motion on this, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Mitchell. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Nows, will you give us a report on the additional parking lot?
I thought you said one two.
Yeah, yeah, under all I. I was giving a small hour and a second.
I'm sorry, we'll work it.
I thought I was getting a break tonight.
No offense, no breaks. You can't run through a fence, there's not one there. That's why we didn't finish.
Yeah, we're holding on. Our first request this evening is to purchase two thousand and twenty four, it is a pickup truck trailer combination for fields. We currently haul equipment, tractors, and lawn equipment from one field to another. We do it now with a truck and trailer. This is a combo, so we can do it now with really just the one vehicle. This purchase off a state contract through Gangle Truck Center.
Motion to approve. I have a good motion on this, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Mitchell. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carries. All right.
Next item is to extend contract to Caravan Construction Company for the finished work at the existing three story building. It's an extension of contract and not a change order because the current contract with them would have been a change order, it would have been for the new three story. All the stuff and everything are the same, so this just extends their contract for this two hundred and sixty, two thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars.
It allowed us to use the painters that were on site.
Correct.
Painters, plumbers. Instead of that. It's an extended scope of that.
Yes. Let's start using the letter designations for each building. They're both three stories, they're both existing.
Building C.
So this is building C. That's a question, this is building C?
Yes.
Let's start using the letter designations instead of all this, from all of these, you've got on here.
You got it.
Motion to approve. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Smith. Got a second by Mr. Mitchell. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Nows, will you give us a report on the additional parking lot?
I thought you said one two.
Yeah, yeah, under all I. I was giving a small hour and a second.
I'm sorry, we'll work it.
I thought I was getting a break tonight.
No offense, no breaks. You can't run through a fence, there's not one there. That's why we didn't finish.
Yeah, we're holding on. Our first request this evening is to purchase two thousand and twenty four, it is a pickup truck trailer combination for fields. We currently haul equipment, tractors, and lawn equipment from one field to another. We do it now with a truck and trailer. This is a combo, so we can do it now with really just the one vehicle. This purchase off a state contract through Gangle Truck Center.
Motion to approve. I have a good motion on this, I hear a second. Second by Mr. Mitchell. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Next item is to extend contract to Caravan Construction Company for the finished work at the existing three story building. It's an extension of contract and not a change order because the current contract with them would have been a change order, it would have been for the new three story. All the stuff and everything are the same, so this just extends their contract for this two hundred and sixty, two thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars.
It allowed us to use the painters that were on site.
Correct.
Painters, plumbers. Instead of that.
It's an extended scope of that. Let's start using the letter designations for each building. They're both three stories, they're both existing.
Building C.
So this is building C. That's a question, this is building C?
Yes.
Let's start using the letter designations instead of all this, from all of these, you've got on here.
You got it.
Motion to approve. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Smith. Got a second by Mr. Norhols. Any questions or comments?
Same, I believe you're gonna have to keep reminding me which one's A, B, and C.
After I start, yeah, start at Centennial, that's it.
No, come on.
All right, we get a, all in favor? All right, finally, the parking lot, Mr. Nows.
Yes, this is the parking lot adjacent to the senior parking.
long equipment from one field to another, uh, we do it now with a truck and trailer. This is a combo, so we can do it now with really just a one vehicle. Um, this purchase off state contract, uh, through, uh, Gainesville Truck Center, section to approve.
I have a good motion on this, I hear a second. Got a second by Mr. Mitchell, any questions, comments, all those in favor? Mr. Carries. All right, uh.
Next item is to extend contract to Caravan's Construction Company, uh, for the finished work at the existing three-story building. Uh, it's an extension of contract and not a change order, because the current contract with them, uh, would have been, change order would have been for the new three-story. All of a sudden, everything are the same, so this just extends their contract for this two hundred and six, two thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars.
It allowed us to use the painters that were on site.
The painters, farmers.
The buildings that happened to.
It's an extended scope of, that's right.
Yes.
Let's start using the letter designations for each building, they're both three stories, they're both existing.
Building C.
So this is building C. That's a question, this is building C.
Yes, that's right.
Let's start using the letter designations instead of all this, from all of these, you've got over here.
You got it.
Motion to approve. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Smith. Got a second by Mr. Norold, any questions, comments?
Same, I believe you're gonna have to keep reminding me which one's A, B, and C.
That's right. Start, yeah, start it, start it, Centennial, that's it.
No, come on. All right, we get it, all in favor? Mr. Carries. Uh, all right, finally the parking lot, Mr. Niles.
Yes, this is a parking lot adjacent to the senior parking, uh, Caravan Construction, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Creates one hundred and nineteen parking spaces. Uh, this allows them to go ahead, come in, get the parking lot done, we'll come back and do, uh, some, uh, stormwater containment later, but this allows us to go ahead and get the, uh, the parking lot seen.
Motion to approve, all right, we got a motion by Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Second by Dr. Ramsey, any questions, Mr. Niles, all those in favor, what's the timeline?
Uh, once approved, they're ready to get started mobilizing next week. Miss Stewart, I did hear back from Mark, uh, they're gonna actually get started on Thursday.
Okay.
They're gonna start there at Century Place, uh, there near the Sterling Watson Way and come forward in front of us still.
All right, thank you, Miss Niles. All right. Mrs. Collins.
Well, Mr. Jones is here, so I'm gonna show Mr. Jones mercy.
Actually, we're taking that. All right, do I have a book, uh, any discussion?
Uh, two things, Mr. Chairman, uh, number one, let's put on our radar, they, to start promoting the veterans diplomas that we try to, once we get them in the pipeline, we try to coordinate it Saturday in November. So, uh, we have, we haven't had any applicants in recent years, and, but we should. But we should, so like to get that in all the promotional. Secondly, uh, colleagues, Miss Haltrick wrote a grant application to the State Board of Education for Fair Street Playground Equipment. Uh, Fair Street is our smallest campus in Illinois and has no playground on this. It shares the campus, of course, with the boys and girls, so it's quite a trek, that would be used, like, in weather. Uh, so she has designed a new space and some, uh, temporary equipment for an outdoor playground or just for Fair Street. It's separated from the boys and girls club, people, school, school, dedicated school. She wrote a, uh, grant application to the State Board of Education, which was approved, the only application submitted from our system and the only one from our region, uh, which was approved. Uh, uh, suggestion is, if there's no objection, is to ask the staff to examine a matching grant from us, uh, for Fair Street Playground, just as we have done matching grants at we noticed Ten Hill, Mondayville, P A, uh, through recent years. They have added playground material, we matched, uh, school farts or grant, so, you know, uh, we opted for that, of course.
So. Dr. Williams, you wanna get the numbers?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do the other schools as well, uh, we'll be able to compare it to this.
And tell you, it's just Smith on.
Fair Street Playground, thank you.
Mr. Smith, Dr. Ramsey, Chris. All right, uh, we got here, much to, uh, turn into executive session. Someone, we have a motion by Mr. Norold, he's got a second, I'm Mr. Smith, all those in favor? Thank you, everyone.